Welcome everyone and thank you for tuning into tonight's work session. Work sessions are conducted to provide the city council with introductory information, opportunities to provide staff guidance, and to facilitate initial conversations on a topic. No votes are taken. As such, there is not an opportunity provided for members of the community to provide comments or ask questions during a work session. Those interested in providing comments to the city council on any city-related topic are encouraged to participate in the community comment during the regular meeting via Zoom that begins at seven o'clock. Information related to joining the Zoom conference and services can be found by clicking on the meeting agenda. All right. Hey Lori, could you, um, could you turn on your camera, please? Lori?
Or her audio.
Lori Sayer, if you're there, could you turn on your camera, please? Hello Lori? Lori? Hello? And someone on the staff side of things, Brent, would you mind giving her a, shooting her a text? Lori, it looks like you're off mute, but we'd love to see your face. There we go. All right. Um, all right. Um, item number two on the agenda, the strategic planning summary. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you. So I'm gonna share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yep.
So something kind of new that we haven't done in past strategic planning exercises is, is kind of do a summary of the day. Uh, we've typically gone right into the action plan and kind of two things have provided us with the opportunity. Unfortunately, uh, we were, weren't able to have Christie Mott join us. Um, so adding to this piece to this is the day goes by so fast that sometimes we often forget like what we talked about. And so this is an opportunity to verify as a group that yeah, this makes sense, but also an opportunity for council member Mott to adhere, not just from staff what we heard, but to get a little bit of background from the council that participated and then to make sure that this is something that still, um, meets the smell test, if you will. And then from this discussion, then we'll work on creating that next step that we're used to doing related to the action plan. So.
And Brent, I just wanted to pop in and say thank all the council members who did all this hard work and I apologize I couldn't be there. Um, obviously the council knows, but we had a family medical emergency. So, um, I, uh, I'm looking forward to hearing more about it through the presentation and I just want to say again, thank you to everyone who did all the input here and, um, I'm sorry that I couldn't be there to join you that day.
So the kind of breaking this down into five separate themes, um, cause there is, you know, lots of activity, uh, broke it down into five areas related to communications and engagement, community development, downtown development, infrastructure management and organizational development. And again, uh, once we can verify with the council, you know, that these kind of communication or these initiative themes or what we, we use the term a lot during the session threats, um, are still consistent with your thinking that we can work together on an action plan. And I envision an action plan where we give you probably too many things to do and then from there you kind of screen it down to for some priorities, like kind of using the old adage, if you have, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So although still be some heavy lifting moving forward. Uh, so getting into communications and engagement, uh, really trying to focus on internal and external, uh, educational opportunities, uh, recognizing there's a lot of jargon, a lot of processes that we're, we're used to on an annual basis. Uh, but even as we kind of come and go, you know, in and out of the organization, new commissioners come on, there are a lot of things that we could probably take some time to educate ourselves on and each other with. And so, um, taking opportunities to do that, uh, which kind of folds into communication and engagement strategies of, of planning and resources. So how do we communicate? How do we engage with residents? What are our expectations? What are resident expectations? Um, one of the examples was developing a communication strategy and policy. Um, the third, uh, education and marketing of water service. And, uh, one of the examples that I think might be helpful, helpful to council member Mott is we used an example of, uh, a recent candidate for one of the commissions talked about their water bill and how it was, um, shocking to them. And so as a staff, we looked up their, their water bill, uh, which was about seventy-five dollars a month. And then recognizing that they moved from the seat, the city of Eden Prairie, we did an analysis of what their water bill was with the city of Eden Prairie. It was about thirty-five dollars a month. And the conversation really revolves around, um, is the perspective of that former Eden Prairie resident, now Carver resident. And then, so for example, uh, seventy-five dollars could be considered a lot if you were paying thirty-five dollars previously. Uh, but some folks who are probably already in Carver look at their water bill compared to their center point bill and Excel bill and think seventy-five dollars is reasonable. And this understanding the context to that and the layers within that, do we need to maybe talk a little bit about that? And then also talk about some of the challenges related to some of the social media posts we've had related to discolored water and the cost of water, just trying to maybe change the narrative regarding, uh, our water service or, or maybe influencing it in a different way. It often feels like we're apologizing for the level of service and the quality of water and the cost of it, um, more than we are promoting, uh, what we do as a city. Um, inclusive and welcoming in community and engagement of residents. I would couple that with, um, looking at the data that suggests that the city's population, um, seventy-five percent of it, uh, approximately is new to Carver since the year two thousand and what that means, how do we welcome, uh, residents? What are their expectations compared to folks that have lived here longer? And then that kind of, um, moved into, you know, wanting to have large community gatherings and building the kind of the social network or fabric of a community through gatherings, but then also understanding how do, how does the city manage those expectations? If there's, you know, we're, um, somewhat fortunate in that there, there tends to be just kind of the Carver Lions or the facilitators of that, but as other community groups, uh, sprout up, uh, throughout the city, um, are they, what types of expectations would we have from them and discussing, you know, equitable treatment and, uh, sharing of resources? And then finally just kind of managing community expectations for, for Carver at five thousand, kind of a, we've, you know, been following this track and now we're gonna, we're gonna hit five thousand. We're planning to hit ten thousand by the end of the decade. What that means kind of as maybe a new era for Carver as it relates to communications and engagement. So, uh, with that, that's quite a bit. So I just kind of wanted to stop in and check with the council to see if that's what you experienced and have a, an opportunity for council member Mott to, uh, give some first blush reaction to what she heard.
Christie, do you have any questions, comments, thoughts?
You know, I think as we get a little farther into the presentation, I'll have some, but, um, uh, just looking at this, this overview right here, it looks great.
Glenn, council, does anybody else have any questions or feedback to share? Brent? See Joy shaking her head. See Lori shaking? Okay. Three of their head checks. Okay. I think we're good, Brent.
Okay. So then moving on to community development, um, really focused on, excuse me, the difference between, uh, lifecycle and affordable housing in that I think a lot of the conversations that at least I feel like I've experienced, you know, listening to council conversations and planning commission conversations has been centered around what I would call, and I think by definition would be considered lifecycle housing, that kind of want to have that entry level, single family home, you know, that's in that maybe two fifty to three hundred thousand dollar range, you know, and I, I think it was council member Henry that mentioned, you know, the opportunity to have a home at eight hundred thousand. So housing choices at varying price points at all stages of life. Uh, the former, uh, kind of that two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar home would technically meet, uh, what folks would define as affordable housing, which is based on area median income. And so we thought it was important to, to identify the distinction in those two pieces. But then kind of moving to number three is kind of educate ourselves as an organization, both council and planning commission, on what tools are available to promote lifecycle housing and also affordable housing, um, kind of leading into exploring partnerships, you know, with the Carver County CDA, Minnesota Housing, so that we can meet, uh, redevelopment or development goals. You know, there, there could be opportunities to redevelop properties to, to meet affordable and lifecycle, lifecycle housing goals. Also discuss promoting industrial development, job creation. Uh, I'll skip number six for now, but exploring, uh, design standards, uh, outside of the, uh, historic district, downtown historic district. And then there's a, um, opportunity to do, um, an additional zoning, uh, for commercial industrial. Our comp plan identifies a CI zone. Uh, some cities have what's called a limited business zoning district that kind of, uh, parses out certain types of commercial that you might want in certain areas of the city. This kind of broad strokes there, but, uh, that was kind of the, an overview of what I call the community development bucket. So I'll, I'll pause again and ask for feedback, questions, perspectives to be shared.
Go ahead, Christie.
Um, I, I more wanted to comment on this one. Excuse me. I'm glad to see this one on here. Um, I guess in my tenure on council, I have talked about this numerous times over the years, uh, when it comes to affordable housing, not necessarily subsidized housing, but something that's affordable on that lower, um, end for first time home buyers and things like that. So I know developers, when they come in, they want the smallest lots, biggest houses, they want to get the biggest bang for their buck, but I think that we are missing, um, an opportunity to provide a different, I guess, economic population with the chance to live in Carver, um, in a new home. So I don't know if there is something that can be done to, um, like, uh, excuse me, incentivize some of the developers to, to do this, or if there's something Aaron knows of that we can explore that might make it possible to actually have this kind of fruition. But I, I think this is a very important one and at least for me personally, it's a very important one when it comes to the affordable housing and having, um, a diversified housing stock in general.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Um, I think that Aaron Smith can kind of break down, Aaron, you still have that, well, the breakdown of the property and, you know, how you laid out the costs of the Hammer's property?
Yeah.
Uh, for everybody? Yeah. That, I think that will help Christie to kind of see just, just how it works. Cause it was very helpful to, I think, everybody on the council to see that breakdown.
Christie, I just had a slide in my presentation that, uh, showed like the cost of the Hammer's property and then the cost of infrastructure, city fees. I'll send you my PowerPoint, but it breaks down what a lot costs.
Sure. Yeah.
Right out the gate and then adding a home on top of that, just to show affordable might mean something for someone, but we probably need to make kind of our own definition of what that looks like.
Uh huh.
Like some of the concerns that we have.
Sure. And, um, for me, talking about that affordable housing is that two fifty to three hundred mark that Brent had mentioned. Um, so again, I don't know if there's a way to incentivize something like that to happen or not. Um, and obviously it's not going to be, um, appropriate in all, in all developments or in all settings, but, um, if that's something that you maybe can look into or have some more explanation on, that would be great. And I would appreciate that slide that you, that you had. That'd be great. Thank you.
I'll send it over.
And Christie, that's what we, oh, sorry, Joy, I see, but just a sec. Um, Christie, that's what we talked a lot about was just shaking the trees and seeing what our options are out there in terms of incentivizing developers, you know, bringing down, um, fees, you know, what, and you know, kind of what we went into and Aaron did a really good job of framing all of this up is, you know, the ideas that we come up with here might be a really good idea here, but outside of this room and when we expand them a little bit more to the community, they might not be as good of an ideas or six months down the road, they might not be as good of ideas. But I think the idea that we kind of took last week was let's just throw it all out there and see what'll stick and what ideas we can come back with. I'm sorry, Joy, go ahead.
No, I, you kind of expressed exactly what I was going to say, Christie. We all have those same exact concerns that you just raised. You know, I expressed that I feel really helpless when it comes to promoting and bringing more affordable housing to this community. So, um, we had some great discussion. Aaron had some great data. I mean, we talked about a lot of ideas for incentivizing developers. There is, are ways to do that that we can explore and also redevelopment, um, and other partnerships. So I think we had a good focused discussion here. I look forward to seeing the action items that come out of this address.
Oh, I'm just gonna say thanks for getting into that. It sounds like you guys have, uh, had, had a nice discussion that day about it. So, thank you.
It's definitely something we're all interested in. Lori, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I had a question. Um, we had touched a little bit during the sessions on land trust. Where does that fall in here?
The land trust would be in that number three to seek edu- educational opportunities and tools for lifecycle.
Okay.
Housing. The land trust would be, uh, a tool to use for affordable housing. So under that scenario, we likely invite the CDA to talk about their land trust program and provide some examples of how they've done it in other communities.
Right. Thank you.
Right.
So we, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, I think we're good to move on.
Uh, moving on to downtown development, uh, a, a pretty robust conversation regarding a catalyst project in the downtown, meaning, uh, a project that provides an incentive, um, for someone to come, come to the downtown other than kind of our current offerings. Um, on a larger scale, you know, example would be, uh, the Krieling Center in Chaska. You know, it's obviously not something that, excuse me, fits Carver, but you know, what's Carver's catalyst project? Um, so, you know, feeding into that, creating destinations, gathering spaces, promoting business development. Uh, there was quite a bit of conversation kind of talking about the evolution of the downtown. Um, where, you know, when I first started in the community, the, the downtown business council was essentially the, uh, made up of the occasional sale stores, um, Carver Junk Company, Farmer, or Farm Grill Junk, Miss Max, and now, you know, our regular, um, visitors for that gathering are the daycare, uh, the insurance, uh, folks, um, help me out here.
Chiropractor.
Chiropractor. Uh, so kind of focusing on more kind of, uh, daily services or, you know, we have the ice cream shop that is open, the, uh, the salon. Uh, there's a, a different feel. And so trying to understand that and what could add to that. Um, a really good comment, uh, kind of under, uh, Vicky Sun's item, which kind of she brought up under kind of her big crazy ideas, looking at the future of the church by the river, that it largely sits empty right now. And so should we have a, uh, internal and even maybe a community conversation on, you know, how that building should be used so it maximizes its impact to the downtown? Um, similar to that impact to the downtown, looking at, uh, Riverside Park as a, a natural amenity. Um, and I can share my slideshow related to that, uh, Christie, that the concept would be to kind of let some of that area within Riverside Park grow up kind of in a prairie setting and have some natural trails through it. Um, but while keeping the boat launch, the campsites and the archery. Um, obviously progress on the certified levy project, uh, looking at redevelopment opportunities, uh, business incubation, uh, where maybe the city buys a property, uh, redevelops the, the building and then, uh, through the EDA, um, provides a, a lease, uh, with, uh, a lower monthly rental rate to try to get that business going, kind of incubating or helping it grow. Um, talked about the need for a coffee shop and similar gathering spaces. And then frankly, a lot of the conversation revolved around, you know, the public services, storage garage and kind of its place and kind of the heart of the downtown and what that means. A lot of conversation related to the, the splash pad and, um, I'll kind of let the, the balance of the council speak to it, but my takeaway was a little bit of uncertainty with not wanting to push forward with a splash pad or fill in the blank in that location until the public services storage issue is resolved in some form and the kind of the building is, is, is gone and then kind of, uh, readdressing it. That's my takeaway, but this is also a good opportunity to verify that what I heard is what the council meant, um, and what they want the takeaway to be.
Yeah. And Christie and everybody else, um, reel me in if I'm not summarizing this appropriately, but, um, we got really excited about the idea of having another coffee shop downtown and doing a, a business incubation and the catalyst project, pulling the trigger on the, the splash pad for downtown. But I think after getting to some level of excitement, we decided that there was a pretty clear like level of if then and what had to happen to make that happen. So for the splash pad, we need to figure out the public services storage solution. Um, and then I think the other thing that was overwhelming priority was the certified levy project, which we all understand could take some time. Does anybody else have any other thoughts, comments?
I have a, a few.
Go ahead.
Looking at this. Um, so when I'm looking at, so I'm interested, so downtown, I live downtown, so I get to see downtown on a little bit different level. I get to see more day to day than just, you know, you come down to go out to dinner or something like that. Um, and the number of people that are, are walking around or visiting places down here has grown a lot in the last probably two years. Um, I've noticed it quite a bit more. Um, so when we're looking at the future of the church by the river, I think that's a really, it's a one, another neat building that we have downtown. And something for my big idea, I guess, for the church by the river is to possibly look at having it as the, the museum downtown, um, possibly. And obviously this is just the pie in the sky, you know, staffed on the weekends by volunteers who come in. There's plenty of, uh, artifacts and, and historical items that sit in a lot of our houses down here that could certainly go on display, but it might be another attraction if people are coming down here, um, to stop in and visit a place like that. Um, and you know, right now we have a lot of businesses down here that are open. Uh, we have a lot of financial insurance that is coming in right now. So that's not necessarily a destination. Besides, if you're going there just for business, it's not a walking destination. You know, if you're kind of touring around town and, and taking a peek at the historical markers and going into the ice cream shop or going into the, um, the Carver General, uh, it's not, like I said, it's something that you, what we have a lot of downtown right now is what people specifically go to see and then they get in their car and they drive away. Um, which again, business owners and business, you know, people who rent, that's entirely, you know, their prerogative of what their business wants to be. But I think we could do more or better if we had some other businesses or attractions down here that were open on a more consistent basis or something more than just a drive up and leave, just something that would attract to keep walking downtown. Um, I would love it if someone would open the coffee shop. So if someone can hear us out there, please open a coffee shop, um, nearby. Uh, when it, let's see, I think there was one more on here that I, oh, the, uh, the splash pad. I think in, for myself, until we find a place and have the means to, to move the storage up to somewhere else or to somewhere else, I would be hesitant to tear that down for the splash pad until we have a place for all those things to go. And I'm sure, I'm sure that's been talked about when I wasn't there and we've talked about it as a group before. Um, so I guess that's probably my only comments on this. Otherwise, the rest of it seems very, very self-explanatory. Um, so.
Glenn, do you have your hand up?
Nope.
Itching. Okay. All right. I think we're good on this one, Brent.
Okay. Uh, next, infrastructure management. Um, uh, kind of a brief discussion on the, the opportunity that the city will have to do a turnback project with Carver County. I think it was council member McKnight talked about, uh, the need for pedestrian facilities that would connect kind of the Bluffs neighborhood to the downtown and kind of working through that. And then kind of overall the, the prioritization of planning for, of parks and trails. Um, you know, we have this Parks Master Plan. We have some resources within the park dedication fund, but then identifying some priorities, uh, within that. Uh, also discussed, uh, water tower resurfacing. So that's the water tower nearest, uh, Fleet Farm, uh, and then opportunities to perhaps, um, rebrand that. Uh, there's an old logo on that. Uh, Aaron Smith presented a, a concept, uh, that the city of St. Cloud uses that's, both you'll see it in the presentation, um, that she had, uh, but just a little bit more of kind of that landmark placemaking to like, oh, okay, I'm in Carver as opposed to the, the Fleet Farm sign. Uh, something that we've talked about quite a bit as kind of a preview is this the future of mass transit in Carver Station in the community with the, the operations portion of the grant, the end needs to, and then just kind of the new ex, community expectations related to mass transit, uh, post pandemic, um, when we get there. And then something that we talked about related to the downtown is public services storage, the, and the joint stage, space study between public services and the fire department, uh, which the council will likely see later this spring. And then, uh, Dan Lannis, uh, brought or presented a concept just to be thinking about best practices for technology as it relates to infrastructure, whether that's streets, uh, water and sewer infrastructure, um, uh, component, you know, when we're designing components or looking at signalization and, and looking how technology will certainly, uh, influence infrastructure going forward. If you think about what infrastructure look like in two thousand compared to today and what it might look like by the end of that decade and just trying to integrate those rather than trying to retrofit, um, on a go-forward basis. So I'll pause here again.
Christie, I think my color commentary for this is, um, the water tower resurfacing project sounds a little vanilla and dull perhaps when it's teed up like that, but I think once you take a look at Aaron's, um, PowerPoint presentation, um, it is like, like think the clock tower, water tower in Eden Prairie, but more like, oh, you know, like just really like announcing that you were in Carver. There is no mistaking that you are here. So, um, it's definitely something that's enticing and I, in my opinion, worth looking into a little bit further.
Uh, could, when I'm looking at this and it says pedestrian facilities and maybe Joy, this is something you brought up or if one of the council members wanted to explain it or Brent, uh, maybe a little bit more about pedestrian facilities.
Sure. This was, uh, really related to County Road forty, um, largely, you know, um, between Jonathan, Carver Parkway and downtown. Um, there is, you know, we talked a lot about downtown and bringing people downtown. Well, there's not a lot of parking downtown. We want people to be able to access downtown via foot and bike. And, you know, the trail that exists along the creek inside, uh, US Fish and Wildlife's area isn't well maintained. Um, it was a ready mess for the last couple of weeks as they've been replacing some, Excel's been replacing poles. And so a lot of people use County Road forty to walk and it's not awesome. So I was just thinking about that as we think about the future of that road and especially when we do turn it back, is it possible to add some pedestrian, a bike lane, a something just to make it easier to get people from the Bluffs and along forty there into downtown?
Okay. Yeah, that's always been a problem with, like, the unsolvable problem to get here. You ask for wildlife trails great when it's dry.
Yeah. Yeah. Those couple of days a year. Yeah.
Both of those days.
Um, can I have a little more explanation about the fire department space study? I don't know why I feel like we had done something about this already, but I guess I could be wrong. Maybe we just talked about it.
Yeah, we're, so it's in process. So the com, the council kind of, um, was updated on that or provided an overview of that last fall. So we've been working on it. So this is, it's not necessarily a to-do to get the space study done, cause you'll have the result, the, the results of the study, but more as a cue to say that once you have that study, there'll be something to talk about and plan for going forward.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
I had a comment in reply and hoping this is like an okay form for where it's something that I thought of after our strategic session and that we do have a lot of unknowns with the mass transit in the Carver Station. But like that aside, there is a lot of that parking lot, the surface area not used, but it's theirs, not ours.
No, Lori, it's ours.
Oh, it is, okay, that's maybe what I need to learn more about. And then two, so with just kind of that it's unused, but it's, you know, pavement. And that the perception of, you know, oh, we have things that aren't used and then we have a need for things. But I can't think of too much to use it for other than a tennis court. But then I started thinking, is that possibly an area that we could repurpose? Even if it's just, you know, not long-term without a huge investment for maybe not tennis courts, maybe basketball, maybe, you know, bike racks, maybe a skate park. So when it was kind of those big ideas, I'd like to just kind of mention that and see if that's ever something down the road that could be a possibility or feasible.
Yep, and that's a, that's a great comment. That's one of the things that when Aaron's presenting on the kind of the future of mass transit and Carver Station, one of the planks, I'll call it, will be, how could that site be repurposed? One of the threads that you'll see within that though is, and I don't know all the answers to this, but there are certain conditions that will run with that property. I don't know what they are right now, but that land was purchased with grant money. And so it's not going to be, we're not going to have maximum flexibility that we might have with some other property that we bought. But Aaron will be, will dig into those conditions and then present a series of options for the council to consider. So a very, very well-timed comment.
Thanks.
And then moving on to our last area, organizational development. Quite a bit of conversation related to financial staff resources, recognizing all the work that Kathy does, but also recognizing that, you know, in a lot of ways Kathy didn't sign up for the amount of work that she's doing and the complexities related to a community that's growing fast. That is probably well over 5,000 at this point, you know, has some really kind of complex financial requirements. And recognize that she's really the only person that does finance work from a technical level. And so a lot of conversation related to the need to have a finance director and perhaps moving that up in our long-term financial plan. Also discuss IT services strategy. We also, we have, and software integration, we have Marco that does our IT work. We don't have kind of somebody on the ground that helps us kind of with the day-to-day. And so one of the examples of an action plan was to look at maybe partnering with a neighboring city or looking at our service plan with Marco to have kind of a more boots-on-the-ground approach, whether that's a, you know, once every other week or once a month piece that kind of have them help us, whoever that them be, to look at IT services, integrating software, et cetera. Also talked about long-term staffing needs and just in general in communications and the fire department and talked about how, I mean, communications has changed. You know, it seems to change kind of year over year and how much we're investing through Bolton and Mink and other resources to really have quality communications. I feel like the look and feel of our communications have really changed within the last two to three years. And I believe the expectation for that is only going to grow as our community grows. And then also looking at the need, you know, not today or tomorrow, but you know, recognizing the demands of having essentially a volunteer fire chief. You know, where we have as a community the same expectations that we would of any other department director. And we're fortunate to have Cali running the fire department right now. But as, as the community grows and resources become at a premium, having a plan to look at having somebody in that position full-time. You can see trend lines as we look at larger communities. If the city does hit 10,000 by the end of the decade, you know, we're likely going to be in a position where we're probably overdue for a position like that. Also looking at inclusive processes, recognizing that we do have a bunch of new residents and new people to our community and do our processes align with getting that word out to people that aren't familiar with our, our systems and processes and communication methods. To look at ways that we can recognize some of our biases and look at ways that we can include folks that maybe we don't see on a usual basis or committees, commission assignments, volunteering, et cetera. We also discussed the city attorney. So Larry, I put you on mute full-time here, but I'm just kidding. The, just recognizing that at some point, even though we'd like to have Larry permanently, that at some point he'll be looking to retire and what a significant role he's had and that position has on how we do business of the city. And so, you know, wanting to be ahead of that and engaging in conversations so that we can be thoughtful about an integral part of how the city does business. Also the promotion of partnerships and shared services to be in a position where, you know, we don't have to buy everything ourselves, you know. IT would be an example, is there a way that we can share that type of service? Also maximizing the resources, grant writing, and then finally sustainability, which kind of leads into the green step cities, you know, how can we be good stewards of the environment and, you know, not waste resources? You know, one of the kind of digging deep examples or specific examples would be, could we look at, you know, a lower-cost electric vehicle for building inspections? You know, there's obviously electric vehicles that are very expensive. There are also some that are relatively inexpensive and would that be something that the city wanted to invest in? So, but then I'll pause again and look for verification and feedback perspectives from the council.
Yeah, I think the one thing that struck me, I think it was Lori, Christie, who asked the department heads, like literally, if we would add one staff position, what would it be? What do you think is the number one priority? And everybody said finance director. So that was, that made an impact on me.
That's the exact question I was going to have. That was the one, that was the one, one I was going to address. So when we're, I think Brent, you had talked about that council had discussed moving forward in the plan. I don't know exactly where it lies in the plan right now. We do have, I mean Kathy has been fairly open about talking about a retirement date and things like that. Is this going to coincide with that or is this going to come in before that?
Well, that would be probably an action plan step where we'd have a conversation with the council, what your comfort level is. I would say that, you know, this is what I shared with the council. I think we probably needed a finance director two to three years ago. It depends on Kathy's retirement plan. You know, the example that I use that we've resolved to various extents with this kind of, kind of job sharing role. But at one point when Kathy's father passed away, you know, she came in to do payroll, you know, the day after, because at that point we didn't have anyone else that can, can do that level of work. You know, we have somebody that can back up payroll, but there, there are things that really, she only has the economic background to be able to do. And if you think about how tenuous that can be in an organization our size, looking at, you know, we need to look at upgrading our software for accounts payable, receivable, our budget, et cetera. And I would feel guilty assigning that task to think Kathy to lead up by herself. So right now, it's planned for 2023, you know, to have that position in my mind. You know, if we have the budgetary capabilities, I'd like to add that in 2022 and have that person work side-by-side with Kathy and, and then have them select the financial software that they wish to choose. You know, eliminate some of the consulting work that we have in the finance area. We, you know, do a monthly finance meeting with Abdo that comes at a cost. You know, some of the long-term financial planning that we do, we can migrate over to that position. But again, there's always, in a growing city, there's always a lot of needs. And so if you have the financial capability to meet that demand is another thing. But that, hopefully that provides a little bit of context for you.
Thank you. So looking at a finance director, do you have an idea in, you know, today's number, what, what kind of salary that would look like?
Yeah, you're, we're probably, you're probably at right around $30,000.
And then as Kathy then, you know, retires eventually, are we looking to hire someone? So let's say Kathy's here in the middle and this finance director is here. Once Kathy, are we going to hire more of an assistant to the finance director? Is that what we, do we talk about that at all or what that looks like for the?
We haven't dug that deep in the detail, but the strategy would be to keep a position like Kathy's.
Okay.
You know, to refill that once she retires to do, you know, the work that she's doing. So, but you know, part of it is, you know, once you, once you have somebody sitting in that chair, you, you kind of rely on them to provide some feedback of what is needed. So maybe it's, as a speculative piece, maybe it's not an accountant. Maybe they say, we really need a second utility billing clerk slash accountant. You know, I, I'd want to rely on their expertise in that area to kind of diagnose where we're maybe a little bit weak as far as resources allocated and then design a position that meets those needs.
Thanks for the explanation. And I guess the other council members, if you have anything you want me to know from your viewpoint, I would love to hear it.
Go ahead, Lori.
I do. I would support adding that position in 2022, even though I know that's not the intent of this meeting. But the, the reason is, I think that would be great to have the future higher work side-by-side with the current head of that department or head of that area and be involved with making decisions for the software integration. I think too, with some improvements in that area with the software integrations that, that might take the load off of some of the administrative things. So that's kind of my reasoning.
Anybody else with thoughts or comments? Christie, I'm, I will admit my bias because of my professional background, but I think the communication staffing and having a dedicated resource for that is something that's super important. You've heard me bang on this drum before. And I think I'm getting, I'm pulling everybody along and I think we're closer every day. But I think just the addition of the help that we have had, just to, you know, everybody in the last couple of years has been able to see just in the graphic look of our communications has looked a lot more pulled together and making sure that we're singing from the same sheet of music when we're talking about different aspects. And there's so much more that we could be doing in terms of, you know, promoting our water, letting folks know what goes into development so that it's not a hunch to the gut when that empty field behind your house goes up for sale, so that they understand the process that's involved and that it's not the city gobbling up all of this land. So I'll step down off of the communication soapbox, but that's just a little bit more insight from where I was at. Go ahead, Lori.
Help, Courtney, if you can help me out a little bit then.
Yeah.
Since we were talking about the finance director, are you talking about the finance director being able to provide some of this information or a communications person as well?
A communications person as well. So that's, finance is number one, like literally on that list. And then communications is the fourth line. So I was just addressing a different area.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I was speaking right.
No, not a hybrid of somebody who's good with math and write a social media post.
That would be a different nature though.
Right, right.
I guess, you know, my comment was the thing that struck me in the discussions and the presentations from the staff is that I think both for the finance director position as well as communications, a lot of people are doing this job. Meaning either a lot of people are pitching in or we're all trying to do communications work or we're having Bolton and Mink do it, or we're having some of our external accountants doing some of this and could we focus it a bit better, right? We have a lot of it going on and a lot of people are doing it. Could, you know, these are, these seem to appear to be really needy roles that it deserves that kind of dedication. Plus, you know, I know we're concerned about Kathy's retirement too. So that was kind of what hit home for me is we have either a lot of staff doing that in addition to what they do day-to-day as well as external folks that we pay or leverage their services to do that for us too.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Councilmember McKnight, you know, to be, I mean, some of the stuff with the finance director, you'll still see like Paul Stein and, and I, like, I do in the bond sale and Abdo still has to do the audit. But you'll get away from his, Aaron, Larry and I working on a project and doing a bunch of calculations and math and then taking it to Kathy and say, we think this is right. You know, and on top of all the day-to-day stuff that she's doing. And so, you know, there, you know, we did multiple TIF districts, you know, a few years ago. We're doing, you know, we're doing construction projects and, you know, we've had conversations where, you know, we're, I think we're fortunate to have Kathy because if we had somebody else that would, I would say like had five years of experience with that same position and paid, we would be in trouble. And we're very fortunate to have Kathy's years of experience and familiarity with the city and our finances. But I think we're a little bit on borrowed, borrowed time. We have, you know, obviously backstops where we, you know, check things and we have, you know, Abdo helping us out quite a bit on, on that to help. You know, but there are, there are some pieces there that I'm appreciating this conversation because I think in the long run it'll, it'll help the city by having somebody with that level of expertise in the area of finance.
Okay, just to, just the last follow-up then. So tell me if I have this right. So obviously we could add staff, we would love to add staff everywhere. But the council kind of consensus was that when we're looking at the finance director, the communications and the fire department chief, that the finance director one came in first at this point in time and to move it forward more quickly. This is kind of the summary of all, of all this.
Based on feedback from staff, yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And Christie, that is the 45-minute Cliff Notes version of 12 hours worth of work. So I don't know if you've had a chance to sift through those videos, but it's significantly more explicit as to how the sausage was made here.
Sure, no problem. I appreciate everyone's comments and helping me come along with this for tonight, so thanks.
So that concludes my presentation. If there is anything in any of the slides that isn't hitting the same note that it did during the strategic planning session, I'd appreciate that feedback. I know, and this doesn't need to be like the, the last chance to do that. You'll have another opportunity during the development of the action plan. But I think it was Aaron Smith that, you know, brought up a good analogy related to like, sometimes things sound really good in the council chambers and then when you are in a position to implement those or tell somebody they can't do something, they don't sound as good. And so if anyone's having that feeling about what they saw in this presentation tonight, like, yeah, maybe now is not the time. It would be a great time to have a conversation on that if like, I just don't think that would be one of our priorities or I'm having a hard time getting my hands around this. Even if it doesn't lead to something coming off the list, just to kind of give ourselves the space to have another discussion to, to identify those areas.
I have a question on this slide then, along with. I have a question on this slide then, um, along those lines. So for number nine, for sustainability, um, we have green step cities listed here. We have already implemented that and we have the steps already, I guess, involved with that. Do we, is that something that we need to have as part of this strategic plan at this point in time? If we're specifically calling on green step cities, which, I mean, we, we're in the program and we, it's already laid out. So is that something that we need to focus on at this very point? Or is it something maybe we worked with in the next one?
I guess that what you, I should have mentioned this when I made my comments previously about organizational development. I believe the comment there and Aaron raised it in her presentation is, um, the potential to maybe not this year, but maybe next summer, get a, bring in an intern just to help us dive into green step cities, document more of the things that we are already doing. Um, just so that we can kind of make more progress against those types of goals and really dive into it. Uh, but thinking maybe an internship type opportunity within her team. Did I capture that right, Aaron?
Yes. And I'll also say we are contemplating our community development intern just in general. So not specifically to green stuff.
Sure.
But that absolutely could be something that falls in their role. And then something else that we discussed quite a bit, um, during the two days was that a lot of the green stuff work we're doing at this point, like the smart irrigation system that we just worked on together, that's a green step point. So just adding that into some of our daily conversations, not making it something that we tackle. To say, hey, for the next three weeks, we're working on green stuff only, but thinking through small steps we can add into our day-to-day work to achieve some of the goals.
Then, um, then maybe for number nine, are there a few more words that we should add to sustainability? Just so it has a little bit better explanation. Um, if someone else outside is looking at this or do we feel comfortable with it? Now that's been explained to me, I understand, but when I first looked at it, it didn't, it didn't present itself right away as to what we were looking for with that or what that necessarily meant. So I don't know if it needs, if it could be rephrased or if everyone else feels comfortable with it, that's fine too.
It's a good question, Christie. I, I'm okay with it as is because I think it's a catch-all because it covers not only like the green step cities program and moving forward in that through the steps and also making sure that the stuff that we're already doing qualifies and that we're keeping track of that. But also things like, um, what Brent had mentioned about, do we want to look into getting a larger car for the building inspector? So that when they're tuteling around town, we have a green source of getting them from place to place. Um, and just kind of other things like that. So I think I'm fine with sustain, sustainability as a catch-all, just because we don't go into a tremendous amount of detail with any one of these bullets.
Okay. That works for me.
Okay. So then our, without hearing any additional comments, we'll work as a team to develop a pretty significant action plan list for the council to choose from. And then, uh, get additional feedback if you want to add additional action items. But we'll just work through that process through future work sessions until we land on a, a spot that feels comfortable for the council to move forward with.
I have one last question about, um, something that was in there. It says, so promoting large gatherings and events, is that like promotion of this community room for rental? Is that what, that was intended? Or is there something else in that I missed?
I would say yes. And so is what you just said. And then there was a, a conversation about should the city get into a permitting process for large events? So, um, if the, um, Kiwanis Club from, uh, Norway Young America wanted to use Eepo Kart for a festival, would we just let them use it? Or should we have some type of permitting to say, what are you going to do for garbages and parking? And, uh, and law enforcement, et cetera? Or do we want to maintain how we have been doing it? So I would say both.
Okay. And Christie, I can provide some additional information. So, um, Chewie from the bait shop approached me about wanting to do a, I think it was a, when is it? Carp fishing? Can you fish for carp in the river? Is that something you want?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so apparently there are carp fishing tournaments and it's a huge big thing. And it's very like, at the end, there is a presentation and people drive by and weigh their fish and grown men cry. He assures me it's supposed to be outstanding. Um, but he wants to do a carp fishing tournament. And he's trying to figure out if there's a way to make it go along with steamboat days. Up until this point, generally when folks approach us, be it a, a Jeep show or a carp fishing tournament, the answer has always been, sorry, we only really do steamboat days. And that's because it's kind of the official unofficial city celebration and that's why. But what if we came up with some kind of more regimented, um, more, you know, regimented process for permitting these things? So that if somebody wanted to have some kind of event, that would be allowable as long as they met the conditions. And then Carver becomes more of a event-based community. So potentially in summer, you can come to Carver in June because it's the fishing contest. You come in July because it's a Jeep contest. You come in August because it's the, I don't know, the strawberry festival, um, something like that. So just something to think about so that when these folks have ideas for events and stuff that could bring folks downtown and into our community to spend money to have fun, we can potentially accommodate.
Right. Uh, uh, okay. And then this is kind of specific now that you brought up Chewie. So, um, he was given my email address. I have not heard from him yet. Um, so for steamboat days, obviously that's an event and we have a plan and we have a lot of volunteers who work on it. So to add something in without, you know, checking, I'm just putting in that two cents right now and having it be part of going through the committee, um, would be, um, difficult, I guess, for us. Um, but I understand what you're saying about permitting, um, and doing things like that for certain events that makes sense. So, okay. That's all I have on that question. Thanks.
All right. Um, all right. Um, moving on to the Timber Creek development overview. Ms. Smith.
Everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Perfect. So tonight I'm going to give you a pretty quick overview of Timber Creek. We are recognizing that this is a really big project, um, the biggest residential development Carver has seen. So we're hoping to give you a little bit of a preview tonight to get you to start thinking about it. So not making any decisions tonight, I'm just going to hit some high points that we've worked through at a staff level and then some changes that we've made since you've seen that concept. So again, just a time to get your eyes on it. So the next time you see it, it's not that you have to make a formal decision on things like preliminary plat approval and rezoning. So first the basics, preliminary plat for this project are anticipated by Planning Commission in April. And then we're anticipating that it will hit, hit a council in May. So as you'll recall, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, which requires a notice to 350 feet surrounding the project on the rezoning of preliminary plat. Uh, some other basics, the developer is Summergate out of Lakeville. You probably know Casey. The builder right now is slated to be Lennar. Number of lots is 349. And then a quick review of the process. So you'll remember about a year and a half ago, we did an EAW or an environmental assessment worksheet for this project due to the size, the number of units triggered that process to start. You've seen a concept plan and then annexation is complete both with the township and state. So Timber Creek, that property is now fully within Carver City limits. Something that's important to know about preliminary plat approval is that is when the developer typically closes on the land. So that's when they say, I know what this project is going to look like. I'm willing to stick X amount of dollars into it and I'm going to move forward with the purchase. And after preliminary plat approval, the developer can apply for a grading permit. So what this means is that they can start major earthwork on the project after preliminary plat, which is sometimes surprising when people say, do they have full approval? No, they're not through final plat, but we do agree to a grading permit after preliminary plat. So you'll remember the EAW process. It was long, had a lot of checklist, a lot of people do review. Uh, the notable comments that we've addressed so far is that an archaeological survey was required prior to plating, but has been completed with the state. And then we had a lot of discussion about traffic on Monroe and Ironwood and the JCP project, which I think has informed a lot of the work that we've done in the past 12 months. And then you'll see on the screen right now is a list of the permits and monitoring that's required for this project. So the size is really scary, but there are so many groups that have eyes on this project that I can confidently say it's not likely something major will slip through the cracks, which I think is usually one of my main goals at least. So hot topics that we've worked through at a staff level, we've been through two plan reviews with this group. We've done two full comment letters. One of them was like eight pages long. So we're crossing the Ts and donning Ns with the development team. A big one is Monroe Drive location and layout. Something interesting is that the Hammers property is also developing right now. Uh, so the concept that we just reviewed just west of Meridian Fields. So how do those two projects work together for Monroe Drive? What does potentially a cost split look like for them? What does an agreement look like? Um, Ironwood Park configuration, which you'll see on the screen on the next slide. Uh, big one is street names that we go back and forth quite a bit on. So we hope that when you see preliminary plat plans, you are not disgusted by any of them because staff has tried to vet them pretty hard. Uh, we're working through park amenities and trails. I'm really excited about the trail system here. We'll see it on the next slide too. And then the development team held a neighborhood meeting with Copper Hills. So we recognized that they were going to have a lot of questions and we wanted to get out ahead of it before the public hearing at the Planning Commission. So last month we had about 30 people join us on a Zoom call. It was really, um, I want to say it was intimate, but kind of Zoom call talking about residential development be intimate. But it was, um, Casey was there and then John Bender with Westwood. And people were able to ask one-on-one questions to the group, which you don't get in a preliminary plat, public hearing setting. So it was a really effective meeting and I think has everybody more at ease moving forward with the project. So this was tough to get on one screen because the project is huge. But this is a layout that they've provided for us, uh, something to focus on right now. Trail system is in yellow. So you'll see that there is a really robust trail system from Ironwood Park extending down to Timber Creek. So thinking about, um, Hawthorne Ridge, the trails along the ravine are likely going to be similar, pretty nature-based. A little bit scary in some spots. Don't bring your stroller and keep an eye on your kids. But there is some beautiful topography in that area that we are working on to figure out a trail system. Purple is sidewalks. So making a connected neighborhood, not only via trails, but also side road to give good connection. Also thinking about Carver Elementary. All, um, kids that live in this area would be walk to school. So thinking how they can get there safely and effectively from a couple routes. If a family feels more comfortable keeping their kids in the neighborhood instead of out by Monroe, giving them a couple of options. So I'm going to scan, you'll see, uh, the less clear image is the concept plan that we reviewed. And then the clearer is closer to where we're getting with preliminary plat. I want to highlight three pretty specific areas that you'll see are significantly different. Um, when I saw the townhome area, that cul-de-sac made, um, me, I really disliked that cul-de-sac. It felt like a lot of pavement. I didn't like the layout. It was just going to be a cul-de-sac with several private streets off of it. And I didn't feel like that was an effective design aesthetically or something that would work well. So you'll see at the preliminary plat, that area looks really different. There are some private streets in there that are a little bit longer, offer parking. Just knowing a townhome development, there's typically not a lot of on-street parking because the streets are usually a little bit, uh, narrower and they're private. So how can we allow some parking in that area? So there are some, uh, pull-off parking spots. You'll notice in the concept plan, there was some parking for the park along Monroe Drive. We flipped that down to Ironwood, understanding that, um, topography near Monroe is really tricky. And, uh, there's an area of the park in Ironwood that we anticipate that we'll be able to program a little bit differently. We want to work obviously with the Parks Commission, uh, figuring out that area to see what might go there, what might make a good park amenity for this area. And then third is the area along the Timber Creek Ravine. Nothing super significant to report here except for the lot layout looks pretty different. And in really early concept, we saw some, uh, properties on the Wagner property that were going to be, uh, large executive lots, but they were only accessible if they had septic and well. Not something that we're choosing to move forward with at this, at this point as a city. You need to have connection to city utilities. So three major changes right now that I want to highlight, um, Ironwood Park, the townhome area, and then the southern portion. Largely, uh, the concept does look pretty similar to the preliminary plat, so what you saw previously. It hasn't changed drastically. Um, I want to say it has because we put a ton of work into this project, but it's typically the things under the street, under the ground that are changing pretty significantly. So I'll go back to this one so you can get a better view. And I will take any questions quick that we can talk through. Again, no decision. I wouldn't, um, I would caution you from getting into the nitty-gritty at this point just because that's not what we're trying to do in the work session, especially without the development team here.
Aaron, can you explain again, what was I think circled to the parking at Ironwood Park?
I'm going to move all of our faces. So on the concept, can you see my mouse?
Yeah.
So we had a little parking lot up here.
Oh, up there. Okay.
And we flipped it off Ironwood here. The topography is really steep in this area.
Yep.
And we're rethinking, um, some park amenities here that may be a better spot to have parking instead of just that one practice field that's up in the corner of Ironwood Park.
Okay. And the practice field stays?
It, uh, changes a little bit. So you'll see that the pond and infiltration area creep in there a little bit. So we're still trying to figure out what this area could be used for if the practice field gets shrunk down a little bit. But also highlighting the pedestrian bridges we have in that area with a better trail system that will take you into Timber Creek.
Okay. Thank you. That's clear for me. Council, any other questions? Go ahead, Joy.
Um, other than the townhomes, uh, can you comment, is it one, um, style size lot of single-family homes? Or are there a couple of different varieties?
But there are a couple of different varieties. What we typically have been seeing in PRDs lately is a mix of 60-foot wide lots and 65-foot wide lots. It's the same for this project. So it makes it.
Okay. And so there isn't necessarily the villa, which is fully maintained.
Correct.
Single-family. Got it. Okay.
And then I'll say it's anticipated that the townhome area will have an HOA for doing things.
Sure.
Maintenance, all of that. And then streets.
Right.
Um, it's townhomes, they will be private in that area.
Okay. That was my only question.
All right. Lori, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I had a question and I know we're not asked. I have a question about Copper Hills, the second addition. So right where like the C and the O start in the word, Copper Hills, second? What is that? Why is that not developed? Is it wetland? Is it the topograph, uh, topography? Or does it need to be a filtration pond? Why is it just empty?
It's an existing pond.
Okay.
Any other questions, Lori?
Well.
All right. Uh, Christie, go ahead.
Uh, Aaron, I'm assuming the, the circle on the bottom left, if I call it the, is that the executive home area?
Uh, it was.
Was, okay.
Lots are, uh, just the typical 65-foot lot at this point.
Okay. So we'll talk about the lower left-hand circle then. Um, that, if you look at the previous plan, it has an in and an out. Um, and then now it's become a circle. So is there a reason that we're not going to connect in that area?
Yes. The Wagner piece in that spot is so steep that it's not anticipated that, we suspect there might be the potential for one home site there, but that would be, uh, an engineering feat just based on the topography. So we don't see it, uh, we don't see any option for development on that property in that area.
Okay.
And in that section, there's an out to the east, right?
Aaron, what was that?
There's an out to the east, right? A future.
The concept plan here. And then here. So again, you will.
No, on the right, yeah, there.
The new plan, yes.
You can't see where I'm pointing. Like at the bottom of the D, if you will, of what that cul-de-sac looks like. Is that not a road? Yeah. Yes.
So this is the Finkel property, not contemplated for development right now.
Yep.
This is White Pine Way and Oak Tree. We do anticipate that White Pine Way will extend through Finkel into Timber Creek. We just don't have this middle piece today.
Okay.
And then Aaron, it looks like there's a retention pond or holding pond that either it has disappeared on the new map or it's not in view. Is that still there or how do we mitigate that?
Um, can you tell me generally where you're looking?
Okay. So if you look on the, the, the left-hand side of the screen here, so when we're about the, the in and the out that doesn't exist anymore, there's that, the blue pond, it's right below the last. about the, the in and the out that doesn't exist anymore, there's that, the blue pond, it's right below the last houses. And then if you go to look in the circle, there's no pond there. And if there is, it's maybe it got cut off, but it doesn't look like it exists any longer.
It, it could get cut off because I wanted, it got a little bit shaky having this large enough on your screen. But it is anticipated that there is a pond in this location. It's just not on the screen.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Sure.
Glenn, any questions?
None at this time.
Okay.
So again, Planning Commission likely in April, uh, City Council in May. We just wanted to give you a look at it now so you can say, oh yeah, you remember some of these features. And then we'll move forward with the preliminary plat.
Thank you, Erin.
Sure.
Um, not hearing any other questions from counsel. We will move on to water, water system oversizing. Dan, just to give you an idea of where we're at for timing, we want to leave about 10 minutes in between the meetings. We've got 10 minutes. Are you up for the challenge?
Yep, I saw that. So, yep, back to, back to speed talking here. So we'll do our best. Okay. I'm disabled for sharing here, Brent. Can I share here? Okay. I'm going to go right here. All right. So I'm, I'm just going to leave this off with, uh, just a real quick refresher about why, why this would be coming up here. It's, it's a, you know, an offshoot of the comprehensive plan. So hopefully everybody can see a comprehensive plan right now.
Yep.
Right? Okay. So when you, just to remind everybody, when we do these big comprehensive plans, what we're doing is we're building, building out what we would do in the future. So as developments occur, we're trying to say, all right, where do, where does our water system go? How, how big do the pipes need to be? Where do crossings need to be? As, as your city grows, the, the comprehensive plan is effectively saying what needs to go where, so this all fits together in the end. So part of that is, 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 uh, understanding what we need to tell developers as things happen. And so most things are, are kind of, uh, they're built out by developers and then, uh, effectively connecting, connecting from one development to the next, we will build out our comprehensive plan. Every once in a while, there's some things that has to happen, which is oversizing, where you have to make a pipe bigger than they would normally build it. Or we have, in this case, we've got a couple of crossings over 212. So ultimately what we are identifying is that in the future, you're going to need a couple of crossings, uh, two to three crossings, what we have long-term. As development occurs, you need that amount of water flowing across, uh, 212 to, to keep us a reliable system. So what we have going on here is, is we have, uh, the potential Hammers development. And that is introducing a decision point for us because with the, the Hammers development, it comes, uh, comes out a water pipe that's going to come up to one of those, uh, programmed crossings over 212. So effectively with Hammers, there's going to be a pipe right next to 212. And we have, uh, ultimately a need to cross 212 for your long-term plan. It's for, it's for reliability of your system. If you have a break under 212, you don't have water on the north side. It, it, it ultimately is, is, uh, it's, it's going to be a necessary piece of infrastructure. But the Hammers is what's triggering it right now. We already have a pipe going across 212 with the raw water main for the well, to bring the well from the north down. So now we have a contractor that's supposed to drill one pipe under 212. And we have a long-term plan that says we need another pipe under 212. And we have an opportunity to invest in that pipe right now is really what the, the gist of this is. And so the, the pricing is, is generally going to be favorable to do it, uh, do it with another contract and it's also an opportunity-based discussion. So Erin, do you want to kind of walk them through a little bit about this as far as, uh, what you've, what you've observed for, uh, your, the needs, needs to the, uh, the decision-making timeline here? Because part of this unfortunately means we have to make a call on whether or not we would do this, um, as a active change order. So Erin, do you want to grab it?
Yeah. Yep. So as far as the, the existing contract we have with the water system expansion project, they're going to be getting started here, um, next week. They're, they're going to be mobilizing up to the site to get ready to work on that. 212 crossing for the eight-inch raw water main. That's, that's one of the first things that's going to happen. So really, if we want to consider, um, doing this second crossing with the, with the contractor we have on board already to do this work, um, we, we need to get, uh, give them some direction on this soon. Otherwise they're going to be long gone and um, the directional drill contractor is going to be out of town. So, um, in order to make this work, um, what we would do is if, if council is generally, um, in favor of exploring this more, I would request change order pricing from that contractor and would bring it back to the council at our April 5th meeting. Um, for you to consider formally, you know, with an actual change order price. But you know, what, what we're looking at in general is we're thinking this is probably in the tune of 100 to 125,000 to make this connection right now.
And in a nutshell, this is money that would be spent at some point in time. We feel the recommendation is, is, uh, really stemming from an opportunity because of Hammers and the fact that there's some cost efficiencies to actually doing this now. So money spent now, we feel is going to be money ahead for the city on a connection that ultimately would be a city connection. There's really no developer that would fund a crossing of 212 for a development purpose. It's, it's really a city connection, persistent reliability. So. Any questions that would help in this? Understand why?
Counsel, what are your questions? Oh, sorry. Glenn, I'm on a screen where I can't see you. So you may be waving your hand. I'm not ignoring you, but go ahead.
All right. It's $100,000 over the bump we've already allocated, correct?
It is. Yes. It's new $100,000, yes.
A mobilization of, of a totally different drill team at any time in the future is going to cost at least 20 to get them there.
Yeah, I'd say that's a pretty, that's a pretty accurate ballpark, yeah, in there.
And we're, we're expanding it to a 12-inch instead of a eight? Is that what I saw?
No, it's, it's a new crossing. It's a, it's a, it's a new 12-inch crossing.
Got it. Got it. All right. Um, and when are they on site with it? Are they going to be there next month? Is that what I'm hearing, Erin?
Yes, sir. Um, they're actually going to be starting to come out to the site next week and getting some of the pipe fused and they're ready to go for the eight-inch crossing. So they're, they're getting ready to go here very shortly, Glenn.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, anytime you want to upgrade and, and oversize it for future development, it's an absolutely good thing because of what is all going to be coming down on, uh, the west side um, of JCP within the next few years. Um, and I do not want to cut anybody short on water because we've seen and heard what, uh, what happens to residents when, um, A, you mess with their water and then you charge them for it. So I would like staff to bring together the numbers. So the sooner the better, um, for the simple fact they're going to be there. And if we can knock this out and get this taken care of in conjunction of everything that we have going on, um, I think it's a win-win for the whole water system. So that's, I'm just one vote, but that's kind of where I'm headed with it.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. Joy, go ahead.
Uh, just really quickly, I support this for all the reasons that you all listed. It certainly makes sense. I just want to confirm that no matter what the state does with 212 and expanding it, our pipeline underneath it is not going to be impacted. There's no risk, right? I'm seeing nodding from Erin. Okay.
Yeah. We've worked with the county on the expansion project and they're well aware of what we want to do here. So.
Perfect.
Yeah, that'd be a bad day. We had more pipe and then said, oops. Sorry, sorry, guys. Yeah, we don't want to be there. So.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Lori, any questions, comments?
No questions. My only comment is thanks to the, uh, engineering firm for bringing it to our attention and, um, they have confidence in their recommendation.
Kristi?
Same thing. I just, I'd like to see you come forward.
Yeah. Um, I think you guys did a good job. This makes a lot of sense for, just like Joy said, all of the the reasons that you outlined in the memo. Let's see, uh, if we can go ahead and make the most use out of those folks while they're out here.
Thank you. 10 minutes.
Well done, Dan. I'm impressed. Um, all right. Folks, why don't we, if you guys are okay, let's hold over the Trail Pet Waste Stations until our number two meeting for this evening. Um, and then we can do everything else a little bit later on.
No pun intended?
So bad.
That was intended.
Oh, okay.
Um, is that okay with everybody?
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I was going to say, is that okay with everybody? And I would assume so if you're about to make a motion, Kristi.
Yeah, I was going to make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member McKnight. I am just remembering that I did not call the roll at the beginning of this meeting, but we were all here. Um, uh, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, council, council member Henry.
Hi, Glenn Henry.
Council member Mock.
Hi, Kristi Mock.
Council member Sayer.
Hi, Lori Sayer.
Council member McKnight.
Hi, Joy McKnight.
And Mia Johnson.
I, Courtney Johnson. All right. Motion passes. We'll see you all at seven.